Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors meeting for September 9th, 2021, beginning just a few minutes after 7:00 PM to order. J.C., would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, just as for all.
Thank you. So before we get into announcements, I just want to say thank you, and I think I speak on behalf of the whole board, to our township staff, our public works, our emergency services, police, everybody involved in helping our residents and local communities with recovering from the unbelievable events of last week with the weather. So thank you to everybody. And Rick, would you mind, I know there's a lot of our local communities that are in great need, and people ask how we can help, and if you want to just highlight a little bit of what we've been doing and offering?
Sure. Some of our neighbors, as you have read or have seen or have driven through at this point, in the Upper Dublin and Horsham areas, were particularly ravaged by the tornado that went through this community about a week ago. And we've been in touch with a lot of our counterparts in those municipalities. We've offered our assistance, whether it's our human capital or whether it's any type of equipment that they would need. They are very much overwhelmed, and those folks, a lot of folks have lost everything with the devastation caused by the tornado. We know that the county has offered a great deal of assistance and really focused their assistance in those areas, and in particular to the hardest-hit communities. It's not to minimize by any stretch of the imagination some of the devastation that happened with us. We escaped some of the severe tornado, but we, you know, were impacted significantly by flooding from the Schuylkill and just from the amount of rainfall that we saw in that period of time. But we did make ourselves available and our resources available to those communities. It's just, you know, being a good neighbor and cooperatively in the event that they should need it, because it is going to take some time for them, as they are still literally trying to assess all the damage and then actually start to, you know, repair and get back to normal. It's going to take those communities quite a bit of time, as they are still, they are still doing repairs and assessing what is the impact from that storm.
Thank you. And just to highlight that last part that you said, that it does take a lot of time. So any of our residents that are continually, or continuing to have difficulty, you know, public works, township staff are reaching out to everybody. I know Krista and our engineer team is doing the same thing to try to get to everybody. Fran, nice segue to your announcements.
Sure. Township Day will take place on Saturday, September 18th, from 12:00 noon until 5:00 PM at Victory Fields. Come join us for a day full of family-friendly activities and help support local businesses and community organizations. Due to the Labor Day holiday this past Monday, yard waste will be collected this Saturday, September 11th. Remember to have all yard waste canned, bundled, and brown-bagged. Items over four feet in length and large debris, like tree limbs, cannot be accepted. The bridge on West Valley Green Road has passed inspection and has been reopened to vehicle traffic. Height and weight restrictions still apply. Finally, residents and local businesses affected by Tropical Storm Ida can complete a damage assessment report. This report will be used to help determine how any state and federal aid would be provided to the community. You can contact the Township Fire Marshal's Office for assistance or find additional details on the township website. That's it.
Thank you. And we have our Park and Rec Director, Tom Blumstrom, here. Tom, would you like to share a little bit of who you've brought with you and about Township Day?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us this evening. Cookie Monster wanted to come out and add a little, little fun, a little smile as we're getting ready for Township Day. We're so honored and excited, especially after our, our layoff with COVID. I want to start by just saying a couple of things we're doing so that we can combat COVID at our event. We have some newly implemented safety measures. We're going to have 35 of those lawn signs out prominently located on the grounds that remind folks, saying Montgomery County recommends social distancing and wearing masks outdoors. Also, we're going to have addition of hand washing stations in different locations throughout the event. We'll have hand sanitizer stations throughout the event. You're going to notice there'll be more spaced-out seating in the seating tents. And in addition, we have a new vendor layout which should allow for a lot more social distancing rather than everybody, we used to have the giant tent and everybody be under giant tents. We got long singular tents, so it should allow people to be, A, a lot more outside, and B, not on top of one another. So that should be a nice improvement. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and Colonial School District as our host. Extend our appreciation also to our record-breaking number of event partners and sponsors this year. I will try to do this quickly. Gilmore and Associates, A.E. Clothing, Kill Kenny Law, PICO, Militia Hill Security, A.F.C. Urgent Care, Nest Realtors, TD Bank, Sheeran Environmental, Republic Bank, Davy Tree Experts, Kappa Builders, Sunrise Energy, the residences of Ballack Kinwood, Dostaphos Martial Arts, General Recreation, Gately Murray Communications, Jolly Green Giant Landscaping, Brook Glenn Behavioral Hospital, Rockwell Associates, Dan Moore Tree Service, Treasure Sign, Fun Fields, Hollid's True Value, Connaughtale Auto Dealership, Kona Ice, Anthony Party Rentals, Circus Time Amusements, and again, our host, Colonial School District. We've had planning meetings with the school district, with our emergency services folks, police, public works, and are ready to go as far as the staging areas and the logistics for the event. We've been accepting our registrations, so we're real excited to have businesses, crafters, food vendors, nonprofit, religious, political, community, school groups, clubs, and also our emergency services personnel out that day. We're going to have the fire police helping with parking at the event, so we're glad to have them out. We've got some entertainment booked, and we're very excited, I know he's excited. We have a magician, two clowns that are going to be doing balloons, a DJ, two characters as well, confirming who they are, and we are going to have the Philadelphia Eagles Pep Band, and we're real excited to have them out, because we'll be celebrating that 1-0 start and on our way this year. We also have some great rides booked, Superdome, Ferris Wheel, Castle Fund Center, Eurobungee, Extreme Rock Wall, Meltdown, Vertical Rush Castle Maze, Boulder Dash Treasure Quest, amusement park OC, the Axe Boom Blaster, and the super-popular Zip Line. New this year, axe-throwing, but they are inflatable and Velcro axes. We wanted to keep it safe, very important. And mechanical bull riding, and it is mechanical bull riding. So that'll be fun. We got those two no ones. Fun Fields will be out doing their combine, and also the wiffleball home run contest. We're really excited to have the EAB and Shade Tree Commission are going to be in the tent together, and they're going to be giving great environment and nature information, and also hosting a tree planting demonstration over at the McCarthy Park Basin. We have, oh, we're going to do, got some great raffle prizes, and we're also going to have an Apple Watch raffle this year, which we never did before, so that'll be exciting. We have some games that'll be out, inflatable midway, which is ring toss, tic-tac-toe, hoopshot, hat trick, carnival alley, where they'll have darts, touchdown toss, gone bananas. We'll be taking credit cards for wristbands again. We have volunteers coming from the high school, athletic teams, and the Honor Society, and CPW Rotary Club. We've been doing a lot of publicity. The wristbands are available now for $20 at a pre-rate and $25 the day of. We'll have a shuttle bus operating from the high school Victory Fields complex over to White Marsh Elementary for overflow parking by Miles Park, and it'll just kind of keep doing a loop through the event for folks that need to park or feel like parking over there, which is super helpful and encourage folks to walk to. And last thing, new and exciting this year, and we think this is great for the community. We have the White Marsh Community Ambulance Association's going to be working, emergency services, we're working with the county health department, and we're going to offer free vaccination shots on-site as well from 12 to 3:30. So my thanks to Nick Weaver and Rebecca Werner for their efforts with that. Couldn't stress enough how this event couldn't take place without the entire team, public works, police, emergency services, everyone's input, the manager, Rick Mellor's guidance, and of course, that of the Parks Board, and this board, and your support. So super thankful and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wow, that's a lot, and really impressive, and your enthusiasm is so contagious and exciting. So thank you, Tom, for that summary. Do we have any questions? Excellent.
All right. Just one other thing, real quick, important for folks to mark down in their calendars. Saturday, September 25th is Shredding Day. Everybody in White Marsh loves to shred, and it is at the Miles Park Lower Lot, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, or if the trucks are filled first. So shredding day is September 25th. So we will move on here, if that's okay?
Thanks, Tom, and that's 8:00 to noon, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Miles Park?
Eight to 12:00, correct.
Okay.
Yes, and thank you so much. I promised our buddy here I'd take him for a cookie when we're done, so, and we'll head out. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. That is awesome to have fun news. It's hard to follow up that with announcements or minutes after that, which is necessary, but not nearly as fun. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from August 12th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes. So we have a couple board public discussion items tonight. The first one is the Highlands. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-18 granting conditional preliminary slash final plan approval for S...
Discussion first?
See, I'm going to open motion.
Okay.
This is what I was asking. Am I good?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-18 granting conditional preliminary slash final plan approval for SLD-03-21 Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, the Highlands 7001 Chief Lane, for a minor subdivision plan for a conservation easement?
So moved.
Second.
Now, Mr. Mellor, would you like to share?
Sure. As Mr. Guttenplan is still on, enjoying a vacation, I will pinch-hit for him. What we have before us, and should come as no surprise, as the board knows and hopefully the public, that the township has been working with the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission, as well as the Highlands Historical Society, to preserve the Highlands property at 7,001 Chief Lane. As part of this entire process, the Highlands Historical Society will be purchasing from the PHMC the property. Then we'll turn around, the township will purchase a conservation easement over approximately 27 acres of the property. This will allow us to preserve the open space, and then will allow the Highlands Historical Society to continue to preserve the historical property and structures on the remaining approximately 11 acres. As part of this process and working with the state, they were required to receive zoning variance because the property in which is being subdivided is less than the required 20 acres in the recreational overlay district. It's just over 11 acres. They received that variance. It is also going to the Planning Commission for review. During that Planning Commission review, they only had one concern and one addition, which was a cross-easement for the parking and circulation, since it has to go over the 11 acres to get to the approximately 27 acres. So they were in agreement with that as well. I will project out, bear with me, because I'm not the techie person here, but I will project out the land development here, the subdivision that we have. I believe Gerard Leon is here somewhere? Oh, there he is. He is the counsel for PHMC. That is here. Gerard, I don't know if you want to come up, and in case there's any questions about the project here. That's basically the overview, and I'll turn it over to Gerard if you have anything additionally to add.
I have nothing particularly. I thank you for giving the introduction. I believe I got to meet some of you when we met at the Highlands, maybe a few years ago. I'm glad the plan has finally come to fruition, and ultimately, the need for the subdivision was, it was a request by the Department of General Services, which takes care of all the property transfers for the state. And, you know, my hand has been held by Mr. Mellor and Mr. Guttenplan, getting it through the town, because I do not do a lot of property law. My agency does not transfer property out of its ownership very often, so it's been appreciated. I'm available for any other additional questions on the plan or anything.
Thank you. Do we have any board questions? Do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none?
Can I interject one thing, because I think this is always something, you know, everybody wants, when's this going to happen?
Yeah.
Because everybody's excited for this opportunity and working with the Highlands and with the state. So I know that this was a big piece of this. I believe that the state wanted to see this done and try and accomplish this before the end of the year, to make this transaction come to fruition. So this is a big piece of the puzzle in order to get it approved and then eventually record it, so that then we can, they can settle with the Highlands Historical Society, and then we could settle with the Highlands Historical Society. So there's still a lot of moving parts, but we're moving in a very positive direction to get this project accomplished.
So if you were curious about time, the state and the Highlands have finalized the agreement of sale. We are now just going to, once assuming it is approved, we're going to have the easement and the subdivision recorded, ideally within the next few weeks, and then all the state's conditions will be fulfilled, ownership will transfer to the Highlands, and the Highlands will be free to execute the conservation easement with the town. So I anticipate things should move along relatively quickly in the next few weeks in terms of the transfer of ownership.
That's really helpful, thank you. And thank you, Rick, for kind of framing that. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Mellor, will you please call a roll?
Sure. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Tole?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drausner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you for coming. Okay, so the next that we have is a public discussion item is, I think we'll do this a little differently this time. We're going to review the subdivision land development 0-421 Jeffrey Cowley, 3 Evergreen Lane, for the preliminary slash final plan, which is a lot line change. Is that you?
Yes, I'll do the introduction here for this. Yes, this is a minor lot line change. That includes two properties. One is the property at 3 Evergreen Place, that will enlarge their lot by approximately 15,000 square feet from the parcel at 634 Ridge Pike. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission. They granted all the waivers and recommended approval of the planned contingent upon a note being added to the plan indicating the lot line separating Lot 1 from Parcel A be extinguished, and that a deed of consolidation be recorded combining Lot 1 and Parcel A. This will avoid creating freestanding lot without road frontage. Is the applicant here anywhere? Hmm, interesting. Okay, there's, the applicant is not here. I don't know why. But that's, that's the explanation of the actual lot line change.
And both parties were present at the Planning Commission meeting, right? The people that are selling and the people that are hoping to purchase?
They were.
All were in agreement?
The resolution was passed over to them, and they were in agreement with the resolution that you have before you as well. So I was in contact with them. I don't know why they're not here.
Okay, all right. Any board comments or questions? Do we have any public comments? Okay, then we're going to move this to a resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-19 granting conditional preliminary slash final plan approval for SLD-04-21 Jeffrey Cowley, 3 Evergreen Lane, for a lot line change? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor, will you please call a roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Tole?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drausner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Great, thank you. Moving down to resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-20 approving the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the police and non-uniformed pension plans in the combined amount of $355,798?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor?
Thank you, Chair Nester. So every year in September, Act 205 requires that townships submit for their budget the following year, in this case, 2022, for the police and non-uniform pension plans. We're required to do this by September 30th of 2021. The minimum municipal contrib, or obligation, the MMO, is based on the plan actuaries, Act 205 actuarial evaluation dated January 1, 2021. Right now, with regards to the police, their current MMO for 2022 is $355,798. For the non-uniform plan, which is a defined contribution plan in which the township matches 6%, their required amount is $260,295. When you add both of those totals together, the combined MMO for 2022 is $616,093. From last year, the MMO was $1,324,423. So as we have, all have seen in terms of our 401Ks and really the market, as the market has done well and exceeded the, the contribution requirements, that has helped the overall MMO, and it has helped it significantly with this last actuarial valuation, in particular with the, the police plan. So therefore, it has greatly reduced our MMO, our minimum municipal obligation for 2022. So it'll certainly have a positive impact on the 2022 budget moving forward. But again, the MMO for 2022 is $616,093.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments, questions? Any public comments? Mr. Mellor, will you please call a roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Tole?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drausner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're going down to motions. Do I have a motion to authorize the request from Spring Mill Fire Company in the amount of $75,000 from the Fire Capital Fund towards the purchase of a new fire apparatus? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor?
Thank you, Chair Nester. The township maintains a fire capital fund that we started several years ago that receives money from the millage of the fire tax. That has begun to grow and is available to both Spring Mill Fire Company and Bowlin Hill Volunteer Fire Company. Anytime one of those fire companies makes a request, that request goes first to the Emergency Services Board, where they review that request and then would ultimately make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. In this case, this is for the purchase of a new fire apparatus, which is a fire truck. It was reviewed by the Emergency Services Board at their June 2021 meeting, and they approved the recommendation for $75,000 to put towards the purchase. It's not the total purchase amount, but it's a contribution towards the total purchase amount. The specifications have been included. I see Chief Masters, who's here as well, in case there's any questions of, of the purchase about the fire apparatus from Spring Mill. But we, the Emergency Services Board is recommending the authorization of $75,000 to Spring Mill Fire Company to put towards the purchase of their new fire apparatus.
Thank you. I don't know if you wanted to share anything about this?
Sure.
You're welcome to.
Thanks for having me. My name is Wayne Masters. I'm the fire chief for Spring Mill Fire Company. The piece of apparatus that we're purchasing is a 2022 Pierce engine. That will be replacing a 27-year-old piece of apparatus that was a rescue truck, which we have since purchased in 2013, a squad, which is a combination vehicle, which allows for multiple disciplines of fire attack and rescue services. Our rescue truck has basically come to the point where some of the equipment and things are breaking down, where it doesn't make sense for us to invest into that truck. We are considering repurposing that because we have a very rapidly growing dive team, so we may be able to repurpose the cabin chassis to help assist with our water rescue operations. But more importantly, this truck will supplement our squad, because our secondary apparatus, which is our ladder 45, only has 300 gallons of water on it. So if Squad 45 was to ever go out of service, which it does on occasion for maintenance, probably about a half a dozen to 10 times a year for maintenance, we have to require mutual aid to the neighboring townships or communities to then supplement fire suppression for our district and White Marsh Township. So this is going to better protect White Marsh Township. For Spring Mill, to be able to have a secondary piece of apparatus, will have 750 gallons of water, which will not require us to put a mutual aid company on dispatch, which would be a delayed dispatch when we put them on, because we don't physically put them in our station. They would be responding from their station. So this better protects the community and the surrounding community as well, with better fire protection, and we're replacing an aging apparatus that we can possibly repurpose to also further advance our, our water rescue operations. You guys have any questions or anything for me?
That's really helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Now, just say, I know you guys had a really busy week. Thanks for your service to the township and your mutual aid and everything. Phenomenal job.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Go Eagles.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the U.S. Department of Justice Federal Law Enforcement Assistance Grant Agreement for the police overtime reimbursement in the amount of $24,046.13 related to the 2020 civil unrest?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor?
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is a grant that was received through the state of Pennsylvania. They received funding from the U.S. Department of Justice to reimburse those municipalities that incurred overtime last year during various civil unrest. By approving this agreement, it'll make us eligible for the funds in the amount of
Thank you. Any questions? Any board questions? Public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the disaster declaration agreement for Tropical Storm Ida?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Mellor?
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is a local declaration of disaster emergency that we submitted last week to Montgomery County. This is the board's ratifying of this. This is, uh, the board's ratifying this disaster emergency for Tropical Storm Ida that occurred on Wednesday, September 1st. This disaster declaration ended on September the 4th. A local emergency disaster declaration allows us to perform public works, um, and to meet public emergencies from cleanup without time-consuming procedures, uh, prescribed by law, so bidding and so on, so forth. Thankfully, we didn't have to use any of those, but we wanted to have this passed because we obviously, the next day, had no idea what kind of damage and we wanted to have, this was really another tool in our toolbox, uh, should we need it. Uh, thankfully, we didn't. Unfortunately, some of our neighbors, as I, I mentioned, uh, did need that. Uh, kind of going off of this, uh, it was mentioned in the announcements by Supervisor McCusker to continue to complete those forms, uh, to the county. Those are on our website. Uh, we have done damage assessment. Um, our township engineer, Krista Heinrich, our director of public works, Jack Fields, have been out. Uh, they started yesterday and continuing on trying to meet with different property owners to really understand some of the issues that this was created. Um, you know, we're, we're as a staff not hiding behind, this is, you know, a novelty storm or anything of that, that nature. You know, we, we all live in communities that were, you know, we were probably affected in some way. We understand, you know, that this is, um, you know, when people lose property, it's, it's very devastating. So we're trying to understand some of these issues, trying to get a better picture of what we can target as far as, you know, what can you do for us? What can we do in order to continue a lot of our stormwater remediation? This started many years ago before all of us were sitting, you know, in these seats, um, with some stormwater, um, task force and so on. And a lot of work has been done, but there's obviously a lot of work that continues to need to be done. And that's all part of this process is we're really trying to assess those areas to see what kind of projects, um, would make sense, what kind of projects we can financially, um, afford to do and how we go about trying to prioritize some of those projects. So as you know, we're leading into the budget season and a lot of those things will be also discussed as we are able to better understand all of the damage and some of the impacts that these types of rains and, and floods and so on have had. Um, you know, the, the, the tornadoes, th- those are really difficult for us to try and manage. But certainly the flooding, there's, there's things that we are looking to try and do. It does make it difficult when we're next to a Skookel River, um, and, and those banks, you know, get, get overflown. Um, but, you know, we, we are trying to assess those projects so that we could come to the board with some ideas and, and really through the, the Engineers' Office and Department of Public Works, uh, taking the lead on, um, doing that assessment and meeting with those property owners. And, you know, I would say to anybody listening, if, if you want us to come out, please reach out to us. We'll be happy to come out and meet with you, um, talk to you and, um, you know, provide advice or, or maybe there is a project that makes sense for us in the future. So you certainly can reach out to the township and, uh, we will, we will come and meet with you personally.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, that is helpful information and thank you, Krista. Again, to everybody who's been involved and helping. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Investment Advisory Fee with PFM Asset Management LLC for the police pension plan?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. As I mentioned when we discussed the MMO, the police pension plan has been doing very well. Um, and as a result, our Finance Director, Kevin Barron, recognized this and, uh, went back to PFM to renegotiate some of our pricing. And the pricing is based on as the plan continues to grow, our pricing percentage of what we pay PFM continues to go down. So we did not have a schedule like that in place. Um, he was aware of it in, in some of his previous experience and, um, went to PFM. Uh, PFM has been, uh, very good to work with. They, uh, came back and we kind of negotiated some of those pricings and, uh, very happy to report that, uh, we have some savings, um, in terms of the fees that we will be paying to PFM, um, moving forward. So this amendment, which was reviewed by the Solicitor's Office, uh, basically shows those fee savings, uh, related to PFM in managing the police pension plan.
Thanks. Any questions? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release agreement between White, White Marsh Township and the Hill at White Marsh?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. So before you this evening is a settlement and release for a dispute between White Marsh Township and the Hill at White Marsh. This has been something that was negotiated, um, executively in accordance with the Sunshine Act and we have come to terms, uh, with the Hill at White Marsh. Um, if approved, the settlement will be filed with the court and the matter will be resolved. I'm going to s- turn it over to Solicitor Sander, who is going to walk you through the settlement agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Um, good evening, board members. Um, this is a settlement agreement and release between the township and, uh, the White Marsh Continuing Care Retirement Community, which is also known as the Hill at White Marsh. Uh, I think everybody is intimately familiar with the, um, uh, fight that we've been having with the Hill regarding the duration of the use of the TACAR, the Temporary Construction Access Road, uh, that runs into the development that the Hill, uh, has used and will, uh, use again, uh, in the near future, uh, to construct Phase Two of the Hill at White Marsh Continuing Care Retirement Community. There was a conflict between, uh, what we thought we had agreed upon and what we required, uh, the Hill to do as far as the duration of the TACAR, uh, at, with the actual document, uh, the actual, um, easement for the TACAR that was recorded, uh, there were two different durations. So, uh, the township filed suit against, uh, the Hill, uh, alleging that the duration of the TACAR had actually already expired, uh, based on the understanding, uh, in the plan approval resolution. They said no. Uh, the Hill said that, uh, they had 24 months to use the TACAR after the issuance of the, um, second, uh, occupant, or the last occupancy permit for the, um, Hill at White Marsh. Uh, so there was a pretty major disagreement on the timeframe that the Hill had to use the TACAR. This agreement, uh, reduces the time for the Hill to use the TACAR to the earlier of six months after the issuance of the second occupancy permit for the two remaining buildings of Phase Two, or the completion of all Phase Two construction, including landscaping, finishing work and site work, subject to the following, uh, three conditions. Uh, first, there will be no use of the TACAR until actual construction begins on the first of the two remaining buildings. Second, there will be no use of the TACAR beyond six months after the issuance of the occupancy permit for the first building if the building permit for the second building has not been issued as of that date, provided that once the building permit for the second building has been issued and actual construction of the second building has commenced, use of the TACAR for construction purposes may resume, subject to the overall requirement that it end the earlier of six months after the issuance of the second occupancy permit or the completion of Phase Two construction. And finally, the agreement provides that for avoidance of doubt, the TACAR will not be used except during active periods of construction of the Phase Two buildings as described, uh, and subject to the limitations that I have outlined for the board. Uh, the agreement also provides for mutual releases between the Hill, uh, and the township and, um, provides, uh, other, uh, legal boilerplate concerning, uh, this being the entire agreement. Uh, it will not be, um, amended except in writing, uh, agreed to by both parties. Uh, both parties shall be responsible for their own, uh, attorney's fees and costs in this matter. And finally, that the, upon full execution of the agreement, uh, the township will, uh, settle, discon- file, file, uh, a paper with the, uh, court to settle, discontinue and end the lawsuit. So that is an outline of the settlement agreement and release that's before the board this evening.
Thank you for that summary. Do we have any board comments or questions?
A quick question. The, the Hill's obligation to maintain the TACAR, uh, those obligations derive from a different instrument and, and remain in effect, correct?
Correct.
And any other ancillary obligations as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Including what happens after the TACAR is done being used.
All right. Thank you.
Any other board comments, questions? Do we have public comment? If you can step up to the microphone?
Good evening. Bob Dampman, 426 Flower Town Road, Lafayette Hill. A few months ago, I was subpoenaed by the Hill to be deposed regarding this matter about the TACAR and my position on the Township Planning Commission. At that, that position, um, which, uh, Mr. Sander was there as well virtually. We were there, you know, virtual deposition, at great expense, I'm sure, to the township and to, uh, this whole thing has been a great expense, uh, and to the neighbors prior to the situation. But as it presented with what was known as Exhibit 27. And it was an email that was, pardon me for just getting some details here and I know I have my time limit. Exhibit 27 is an email sent by Mr. Weiss, the attorney for the Hill, uh, in 2016. Uh, and it had, uh, it was sent to Mr. Miller. It had an easement agreement between the Hill and the White Marsh Foundation. Uh, again, this is dated March 1st, 2016. And, um, it, in that one, which is a draft agreement, it did state 24 months. Uh, Mr. Sander did send me that, uh, this past year. Well, in 2018, we weren't still involved in litigation, um, against, uh, actually against the township, but the Hill represented the township. The Hill's supporter, the defendant stated, uh, in 1214, 2018, the document they included there was the original document with six months after the first occupancy permit. It was not the 24 months. In subsequent, uh, court cases, the same document, six months past first occupancy permit, was in the court records. As neighbors, we felt in the end, well, I guess we're going to live with six months after the first occupancy permit. And we dropped our case against the zoning, uh, hearing board and, um, you know, then the township picked it up, uh, after that six-month period. So the T-Car, which is, the first letter T stands for temporary, has become a permanent feature in our neighborhood for the last couple of years, where we expected a beautiful walking trail in the 29 months after construction was to begin, according to the first, um, you know, here, many public hearings about this. I know the economy shifted. I know times have changed, but we're the ones left with the present conditions. Um, you know, we're expecting to be, have, you know, access to walk over, see the cows, uh, disruption, uh, not coming again. We were expecting an end in sight. So I, I did write to, to Vince Manuel about this, um, asked him to forward it to you about some things that might, and I'm sure, and there's a couple of other neighbors that want to speak, but some of our neighbors are left with a huge pile of rocks and debris with, you know, erosion down the, the road, uh, flooding, um, which I'll talk to Krista about again later. Uh, but, uh, anyway, the present conditions are not acceptable. Um, and it, and it looks like it's, you know, might be, you know, it could be, this agreement is open-ended, really. If they don't start construction for two, three years and do nothing at that site, you know, we're left at that. So I don't think it's something that, I mean, I'm sure they want to get this signed tonight and approved tonight, the Hill does, but I don't think it, you know, there's no obligation in my view. It has to be passed tonight without, uh, you know, maybe hearing some more comments from the neighbors. So thank you for your time and, uh, thank you for all you're doing, but see if we can do, you know, tighten this up.
Thank you. Yes, please come up.
Yeah, my name is Emmett Miller. I live at 4108 Fountain Green Road, uh, you're down another block from, uh, Bob Dowman. And I agree with everything he said here. Plus, I'm, I'm curious about the, they get to keep the road until the end of Phase Two. When are they beginning Phase Two? And the reason I ask the question is, I live right at the intersection of the foundation and the, um, and the Hill. So, and I know all the preparation they did to begin the construction there. They put up poles in there so they could bring in utility lines, yada, 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 and all that stuff. They cleared all of that out of there. It's gone. They took all their communication wires, the, the, the temporary poles that were put in there for the construction, they're gone. They, they came and took it all out of there. I maintain that there is going to be no more construction, that they're going to hold it over the township forever. That, do they have a plan? Does any, do they have a plan? When are they going to start? When do they think they're going to start? Does anybody know this? I say they're not going to start and it's a, and it's a good excuse to keep that road and that fence there. I mean, you don't need to, you don't even need the fence anyway because right behind that fence is a fence. So it really has become a spite fence. Their excuse was, well, trucks will be, will go back and forth. Well, yeah, they did, but so what? There are, there's already a fence there. So what is it for? It's six feet high, it's falling apart, nobody can see over it. It's, to me, call me jaded, but it looks like a spite fence and that's how it's going to remain. I mean, do we know when they're going to start? No, nobody does because they're not going to start. They took, they took all their construction equipment out, supplies, the, the, like I said, the poles. I mean, they took the poles out of the ground and left with them because they put them catacorred to where the, the, the utility lines are at my house for the, the telephone, for cable and for the electricity. They're gone. It's gone. They're not going to construct anymore. I'm sorry, but that's just the way I think it's going to be and I really think that this should be revisited because I, I would like to see a, a construction plan from these people. I mean, I don't trust them, quite frankly. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Yes, come on up.
She has to agree with you. That's my wife.
And that means you're agreeing with her. That's how it works.
Judy Mazroff, 4108 Fountain Green Road. Um, as I understand this agreement, um, they're not going to touch the path that's next to the T-Car road. That's a township where people are supposed to walk until after they finish the construction. Am I right in this or not?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, well, if, if nothing else, that should be put and taken care of back there. There's weeds growing, there's all kinds of poison oak. I mean, the kids are, you can't run back there, there are ruts in the road and, and this is supposed to be a township path that you're supposed to walk up and back like they have, the, what the Hickon Society has. So if you agree to this, then it's 29 months after they finish the second two buildings, which they haven't even decided, it's after they build the second piece, when they haven't even decided when to start. So that may be five, 10 years from now. I mean, that, that's kind of ridiculous. I need, this needs to be changed at least so that the path and the, the part between the ends of our homes and the beginning of the T-Car fence is, is cleaned out. There's weeds growing up the fence, the fence is, gets destroyed and it gets left there and then the kids run back in there and there's piles of sand and cement and the kids go back in there and they play in it because they think it's fun and somebody's going to get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dave, aren't the, um, these maintenance issues that have been raised independent of this settlement agreement? Can they not be enforced independently of this agreement?
I, I believe they can be enforced. It's, it's, I think Mr. Miller has had discussions on this.
I talked to our co-enforcement department. They've been in contact with the Hill about those, uh, issues related to the, um, weeds and, and the fence and, um, have already been in touch with them and, and given them some deadlines to get that, uh, corrected. So, uh, we have made contact with them, um, in the last week.
So, we have made contact with them in the last week.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Thank you.
Yeah, my name is John King, I live at 4122 Fountain Green Road along the same path. My concern is more with now, and I've actually reached out to Krista. There's massive erosion on what used to be the farm road gravel path behind the house. The erosion at times or at places is at least two feet wide, it's now more than two feet deep. If you were to walk down there, you could break a leg, break your neck, you could die. That water that rushes down that path is just, water goes downhill, and that water is going down towards Bob's house and down toward the intersection of where the T-Car hits Flower Town Road, but more dangerously, that water is going underground, and it's heading toward the houses and it's also heading into the field. Now, I'm no geologist, but I can tell you that the amount of water that we've had has been increasing with the storms. I've sent photos, I've sent measured, I go out there with measuring tape, I've measured depth, I've measured width, and I've estimated the length, because I know how long our properties are, at least a few hundred feet of these ruts. And when I say ruts, I mean literally, they're wider than this, than this lectern, and they're literally this deep in spots. And if you were to walk down there at night, if you were to be hiking, if you were to be, you know, whatever, you can be in a lot of trouble. And it's all along the side of the, where the T-Car is, where the poles are and where the fence is that's blocking the view. So, aside from the aesthetics of it, this could be dangerous, and I'll tell you, if the water keeps going toward the homes, I don't know how much water it takes to actually start eroding underneath that row of homes, which is going to be a whole other problem if it keeps going. I don't know how long it can go on, but it really needs to be fixed, and I don't know how, you know, what the answer is to it, maybe, I don't know if Krista wants to add anything, I don't know, but it's serious and it happens every time it rains. Now, when the winter happens and the water gets down there and it freezes, it's going to expand and crack more. So, this thing is going to keep cracking. The other thing that I think is oddly ironically funny is that if this happens under that road and those trucks go on it, they'll crack it, which I'll sit there with a huge smile on my face if that happens to this road. But, right now, it's actually, it's a mess, and it's going to be getting worse every day. So, please take a look at the photos I sent, I've emailed them before, and it's quite a serious matter, so, you know, I hope something can be done with it. That's it.
Thank you. Krista, do you have any comments about the water, the erosion?
Yeah, there's a good deal of erosion in one spot John and I met, and we reached out to the Hill, they said they were going to fix it, and I guess they haven't yet. So, we will reach back out to them.
And is that something that falls under the code enforcement?
Yeah, I think it does.
Yeah, this is more stormwater and trying to make sure that the stormwater from an active construction site is not having adverse impact onto the adjacent neighbor, so this is maintaining that the approved plan is being followed. And we, I've seen some pictures, I'm not sure who sent me the pictures, and, you know, not disputing anything that the residents are saying, and it's something that I'm sure Krista can go out and look at and have some, you know, meaningful conversations with the Hill to get these things corrected.
Well, it sounds like that's already happened, it sounds like you've seen it, we need the Hill to respond.
They do, and we're, we're holding money from them, correct, too? So, you know, we do have some, you know, ability to, you know, make sure that they are doing these things and really kind of hold their feet to the fire.
It's disappointing they're not here to speak to it. Any other comments tonight? I appreciate everybody coming tonight and realize the sensitivity and all that's going on with the maintenance of this and the stormwater, and we will follow up with the code enforcement related to the erosion, the stormwater, and the maintenance of this area. I know it's been a lot of back and forth with litigation, so this is not easy by any means. We do take this, take this seriously, but I do want to put this to a vote.
And if I might add, this settlement agreement is narrowly crafted to address the specific legal issues in this lawsuit, and it's the reason I asked the question at the outset regarding maintenance and whether there are separate either laws or agreements that we can use to enforce the maintenance obligations, and, and it sounds like there is, and we're doing that. I believe we need to be very consistent with them in pushing this and persistent as well. But again, I see them as separate issues from what we have for us tonight.
And I guess a follow-up on that, another couple in the back, recent frustration about like when they're going to build. And unfortunately, we can't make them build, right? Like, like anyone else that owns property, we can't make them move forward on that construction. So, our hope, what we're trying to do, you know, with this specific issue and litigation is to restrict the use of this T-Car to as little as possible, and that's, that's how it's been crafted, and that's, you know, what we're hoping to accomplish.
Can I just make one more comment?
Just so we can hear you, we need you at the mic.
My full understanding, but my issue is that I, I think, I'm not, I truly believe in my heart that they're not going to construct anymore. I mean, it's just, they've just abandoned it, they've taken everything away from there. They took the utility poles down. Nobody knows when they're going to start, because they're not going to start. I think, I really think it's a ploy to keep the fence there. I really think it's that simple.
If at some point, Dave, you know, Rick, if at some point in a year or two that there had not started construction, is there some avenue by which we could have that fence, you know, removed or taken down? Or can we ask them to do that?
I think it's something we can probably revisit with them. Ultimately, I believe, if my memory serves me, that fence was put up initially as something that the residents asked for as part of the resolution.
Whoa, 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 timeout, no. We never asked for another fence, there was a fence there.
But they had a construction fence that was put up.
Well, yeah, they put it up.
Right.
That was in response to complaints from constituents about having to see the trucks for about dirt.
It was part of the resolution in the final plan approval.
Correct. So, I mean, whether they ever build or not, you're guessing, I'm guessing, who knows? I don't think their intention is to keep that fence up there in perpetuity out of spite.
They went out of their way to take the poles down and the lines down, so why couldn't the fence come down? If they're really, you know, heart of hearts going to do it, they wouldn't have taken, they wouldn't go, now they have the expense again of putting up temporary utility poles and wiring again, that, that was the clue to me when they took all that stuff away. There is no intention, I'm sorry, there just isn't. It's just a ploy to keep the fence there. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Sure, come on up.
Is it possible to make an amendment to this thing, to this resolution here, that, that they take care of the path on the other side? The path between the fence and the end of our property, because apparently they're not having to take care of that and put it back to where it was until af, 29 months after? Am I, no, okay, explain it to me then.
Not sure about 29 months.
Okay, but it's still after they built. And in the meantime, the ruts are going, there's, there's, I mean, if you guys try and walk up that path, and that is supposed to be for the township, not just for us, but for the township. The weeds are growing all over the place, and there are big holes in the place, people can't go up and back for it, and they're supposed to connect with it. And I don't understand why that can't be taken care of. And according to that, there won't be until after they finish building. So, at least give us that. If nothing else, put that amendment in there, that that can be taken care of now, because even if they construct, they won't be going on the back of that path. It won't make a difference.
Rick, is that the path before that you mentioned that is something that the township, through the code officer, can review, that is outside of this agreement?
Take away the path issue, it's, it's the issue of code enforcement, property maintenance, and it's an active construction site that we can oversee and make sure that they are at least maintaining it to construction standards. We have not gone in and created any kind of path, we don't have, we have not developed a path for that yet, so it is very much still a construction site, but they also shouldn't have overgrown weeds, just like any other property. So, there is enforcement capability that we have, that we have already initiated with them this week.
So, I appreciate that.
Do you want to?
To clarify, if you can clarify that for me, so there is not a current township path back there that's open to all residents?
There is nothing that we've constructed.
Okay, I just want to, it's in confusion, like there was a township path.
There's an easement, Mr. Drozner, that was given to both the township and the foundation by the Hill that is, for after, after the construction of the Hill Phase Two is done, there is a trail easement that at least partly is co-terminus with the TACAR. So, ultimately, the township will have the ability to develop that trail in conjunction with the foundation based on that easement. But until the TACAR is done its useful life, there's no right of the township to go in there and construct a trail.
I think that's part of, that was part, I guess, the whole preservation of the open space back there.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. So, with respect to cleaning up that trail, that happens separate from this legal agreement. That's not part of the legal dispute, that's something that the township can follow up with them on regarding their construction site and whether it's safe and appropriate. So, that, we will do that. But there's not a current trail there, a public trail.
Thank you, yes?
I know it's hard to, people keep coming up, but just, my, six months, that'd be great if they had started, you know, next year or whatever. But I guess my biggest disappointment is that there's no end date on this. There's no, hey, or, you know, such and such and such, and must be completed by 2023, 2024, whatever, but there's no, there's no date, end date on this. So, that's, I wish that could be, I know it's an agreement, it's already been done, you know, but I wish that could be included, that there is an end date.
Thank you.
And we do too, Bob, trust me, I mean, we wish that they would agree to build it now and be done and put the trail in. I wish, I wish it was that easy.
I just want to add one more thing about this, this sort of path that's in the middle of nowhere that nobody's touching. This path, although it isn't used for recreation much more anymore because it's a disaster, it is used for Pico trucks, Verizon trucks, Comcast trucks, Asplin trucks, anything that has to be fixed behind these houses and between that space where that is, these massive trucks go up. And I can tell you that at some point, one of them is going to hit one of these ruts or do something and get stuck. I've seen it almost happen already, where they're trying to navigate up these narrow little things, and they're coming up, literally up onto the hill of my, the back of my house to try to get around them. But as this keeps eroding underground, the weight of those trucks is at some point going to make that give way. And then you're going to have a giant truck stuck in this thing or fall over on that road, or, you know, heaven forbid, toward one of our houses. Okay, so I'm just saying, like, there seems to be no, there's never any consequences to any of this, that's why the Hill doesn't do anything, and so nobody ever does anything because the money that's being held over them, they probably make in two days with what they charge their residents, they don't care. Evan's right, I'm convinced he's right. But what I'm saying is, something's probably going to occur on that road with one of these trucks, because I've seen them spinning their wheels when it gets muddy to try to do it, and they come up now. This is the time they come up, when the power goes out, when the trees are down, that's when they need to get up there, and this is the way they get up there. So, at some point, you may see this happen, and, you know, it, it could be a totally preventable thing. And that's not just for us, I don't know how many homes, when those lines go down and they fix that grid, that could be hundreds of people, I don't know how many people are all connected through that line, but I do know that those bucket trucks go up there and they saw and they fix, and then they get our power back. So, just letting you know that even though it's not being used in a recreational way, those trucks come up there, and I have photos of that too, if you want, I've sent them to Krista, I've sent them to Rick. I haven't sent the photos of the trucks because I thought, well, I don't want to involve power companies or Comcast or anybody like that, I've always kept it out of there. But when you see how close the wheels are at this point, it's, it's really tight, so I'm just saying, it's, it's not a good situation.
Thank you, so it definitely sounds like that needs quick attention. Thank you.
Understood.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. I'm going to rearrange the agenda order here a little bit, because we've had some other additions that came in yesterday, and move up a resolution, because I know you have some other more, this is a bigger item, I just want to move this one up if this is okay. So, we will talk about this, but I'm going to propose the resolution and then give it to you, Rick, if this is okay. So, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-21, granting conditional preliminary slash final plan approval for SLD 0121, Robbins Golf Holdings LLC, 27 East Germantown Pike for building expansion and parking improvements?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Chair Nester. This was, this was before the board at their last meeting in August, the applicant went through their presentation at 207 East Germantown and how they are going to rehab that building, and the applicant will be having, maintaining his business at that location. There was some discussion with regards to fees, in particular, the traffic impact fee and the park and recreation fee. We went back and looked at, with the applicant, the traffic impact fee, they had some discussions with Ms. Heinrich about that fee, have come to an agreement with that fee. Ms. Heinrich can explain a little bit more on how they came to that number of the fee, and that is the only change that is before you in terms of the resolution is the fee to the traffic impact. So, maybe I can turn it over to Ms. Heinrich to explain that fee, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Sure. The applicant had requested that we take another look at the fee, the traffic impact fee. They had requested reducing the square footage of the building, which goes into the calculation of how many trips are generated per square foot. The seven trips generated in the prior square footage remain seven feet, that didn't change. However, they provided information demonstrating that there was existing residential use, which could be given credit for. So, one fee, or one trip was reduced from the trip generation, resulting in six trips generated, and the fee is now 15,000 and change where it was 17,000 prior. Thank you.
The applicant's attorney, Mr. Hughes, is here, if you have anything else to say.
Good evening, Hughes. We've reviewed the resolution, acceptable to us, we're prepared to sign it if approved.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? Do we have any public comments?
Before you go on, can I understand, I'm trying to figure out where we are in relation to last time. Last time I understood that you were requesting a waiver for payment of both the traffic impact fee and the fee in lieu, park and rec fee.
Correct.
Currently, you're offering to pay the traffic impact fee.
Yes.
And?
And the park and rec fee.
And the park and rec fee.
Yes, withdrawing a waiver request.
All right, thank you.
Any public comments? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Mellor, will you please call a roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drozner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for restoring a historical property.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Okay. Thank you for letting me go out of order there. So, we are now to the... Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for a sign in the ultimate right-of-way at 2201 Baron Hill Road?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is a hold harmless that we approved last year for the sign at the, on Baron Hill Road, it was the old water area, the sign's already in existence. The reason it's before you again is it changed ownership, and when they tried to record it with the new owners, the Recorder of Deeds needed to have the hold harmless... it with the new owners, the recorder of deeds needed to have the hold harmless signed again with the current owners. So in talking to the solicitor, and in abundance of caution, we just wanted to reapprove it with the current owners. The sign's already there, it's been reviewed, it's up, and it's been up for quite some time. This is just getting the correct owners on the hold harmless agreement so they can have it signed and recorded.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for a fence in the ultimate right of way at 3 Taylor Road?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is a hold harmless for a fence that is on Taylor, the corner of Taylor and Cedar Grove. The fence kind of wraps around, it's a corner property. This has been reviewed and is being recommended for the, the hold harmless. No issues with sight lines or sight distance at this time. So it's a four-foot fence that'll wrap the kind of corner property and provide some privacy.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Do I, do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling nine hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and four cents, and payroll totaling six hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents, and pension paid costs totaling five thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eleven cents for August 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the roof replacement at 3141 Spring Mill Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
This was, this was reviewed by Harb this week. This is for a new shingle roof that is replacing the existing roof in the historic district. This was, current roof is approximately 25 years old, needs to be replaced. The current color of the shingle is in the type that is replaced in the Harb district. They saw no issues and approved it unanimously.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm not skipping anything. Do I have a motion to authorize the notice of intent to proceed and bid approval based on the successful review of the 2021 road paving bid to Allen Myers LP for the total base bid amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Heinrich.
On September 8th, we publicly opened the bids for the 2021 road program. We had seven bids received, and we are recommending that the board authorize a notice of intent to award to Allen Myers LP for the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. This project's funded by Liquid Fuels Funding, so they would reimburse the majority of those costs.
Thank you. Any board comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I think I got everything. We're good? All right. We are now at the public comment period. Does anybody, yes? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Joanna Walters, President of the Highlands Historical Society. And I just have to say a sincere thank you to everyone. Rick, we first started this journey almost four years ago this month, and it's been incredible. So thank you so much. We will make you proud, I promise. And we look forward to making it just a gem of this township. So thank you sincerely.
No, we are excited, and thank you, Joanna, for coming.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comments?
My name's Dana Dorsey, and I'm the caretaker at the Highlands, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you as well. Very monumentous, momentous occasion, so I appreciate all of your work, and thank you.
Well, thank you for caring for it.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yeah, we just kind of want to introduce ourselves. Nancy Murtaugh from 4109 Jackson Drive, and this is Sue Swift from 4111. We sent an email, our neighbor did, Paul Thomas, yesterday about the flooding issues on Jackson Drive, ongoing. So we're expecting some, you know, some resolution to our issues. It's not just Ida. It was many years. Crest has been out, Jack Field's been out, you know, it's ongoing issues. We have, you know, a storm drain there that, two inches, sometimes it takes three inches of rain, floods out, floods up the top, goes in between our houses. Now it's starting to go in our, on our front properties. You know, of course, storm Ida came about eight feet from our front door, which is not fun. And it really, something has to be done at this point in time.
Thank you. And I know, we received your email, and I did include Rick on this, and it is...
Yeah, I just forwarded it to him today.
The conversation is ongoing as we approach the budget season to look at these areas that do need, this is what we've been referencing throughout the meeting tonight, but I definitely appreciate you coming and taking the time to...
Yeah, I mean, we're taking it serious.
Yep.
You know, that's why we came, because we wanted to tell you how serious we're taking it. And like I, you know, I've told Krista before, when Thomas gets shut down, Jackson's the through street. And then what happens when it floods, you get cars. I've called 911 on cars before that have gotten stuck in between my house and Sue's house. You have trucks that come that think, okay, they're invincible, and they can just come, and then it floods our yards. So, I mean, in the meantime, if the township could be diligent and bring out, like, you know, some sort of barriers and not allow that, you know, the people on our property and on our street during that time. I mean, I know they do that on Thomas, they'll bring up barriers before storms. They did put up, like, yellow caution tape, but they just went right through that.
That's a good point, yeah.
Just are ignorant, what am I going to say?
Pass that along.
It actually was a police officer, they came and thought of order main group.
Yeah, that's how bad it was.
And I'm like, no, that's our usual three or four-foot geyser. And then, like I said, the rate does blow off, it's like this huge, the car could easily, and they still do bow through, for saying that they shouldn't, and go right into the open grate. And I literally put, I mean, I've been a resident for 30 years there on Jackson, and I've so much as, I mean, I put a giant berm right on the curb, and I put a giant berm two feet from my front door, and it's still, it's like a raging rapid river, we've been out through houses, it's like raging. And it's now, like, lake, our two front lawns are like lakes.
You're right across from the country club.
No.
No, Jackson, on Jackson, right. On Jackson. Yeah, when I talked about Thomas, so when Thomas gets shut down, you know, the easiest street there is Jackson, and then the vehicles just come through.
I mean, it was a year ago, right, Krista, with Jack, and then literally a year ago, it's some kind of little Band-Aid to the problem, to help a little bit, but it's to the point now where...
Because it starts on our street, and then, you know, ultimately goes down to Fields, and then it goes, you know, to the basin. So, I mean, Krista mentioned that it has to start, you know, from the bottom and go up. And, I mean, maybe that's true, but all the water is still accumulating, you know, here first. If they could put a larger storm drain, you know, down there for us?
We'll stop out and chat again.
What we know is that, living on Westaway, the infrastructure in the area, and that's not the only area, the whole township, the infrastructure's not built for the storms we have now.
Right.
So that's why what Rick was talking about, budgeting, it's a big deal. And we're taking it very seriously because, God knows, it's a safety issue.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, it's a big safety issue, and I've been back there, walking through there with the kids and everything. Brutal.
It's a raging river, it's literally three feet from my house, and it turns into like a rapid, like a raging...
Yeah, that's what...
I'm amazed no one has gotten hit or hurt.
It is brutal, it's bad. So we are definitely taking it seriously, and it's a big deal to all of us to make sure that people have the proper safety when it comes, you know. We talk about, is it just the rotors at the house? And the roadways are dangerous. You know, you go out there and you get somebody in a car or whatever, we know it's dangerous. Wayne was just here to chief at Spring Mill, they did multiple water rescues the other day. And our storms, you know, we used to say, you know, these storms only happen so often. We can't do that anymore, it's a, it's a big deal. So we do take it seriously, and that geyser that was coming out, I was looking at, I was like, oh, my God.
That's norm, that's norm for us.
It was probably 20 minutes after it stopped raining, it's still a four-foot geyser. So while it was heavy raining, it was like atrocious, I came in, I mean, that was just the aftermath.
Yeah, that happened two weeks before Ida.
Yeah, so it wasn't just Ida.
You know, before that, I think we had three or four inches in the middle of the night, and happened then too.
Yeah, and that saturates the stormwater.
It happens like all the time, when it's on a heavy rain, it happens.
Yeah, I mean, we're convinced, there's no doubt. I mean, we're definitely convinced.
But we're going to figure out some kind of resolution, just something to keep the road, the water off the road somehow or not.
Don't forget to fill out that county survey and get anybody you know to also fill it out, that will help us.
Yeah, several of our neighbors were going to come to live with what we recommended.
Yeah, we thought, you know, we'll just come ourselves, we'll...
I actually was on that street at 6:30 on Wednesday.
Were you really?
So, you know...
Right on Jackson?
On Jackson, so, you know, I saw, you know, I drive through that neighborhood on my way to work and out, and to and from work.
You weren't one of the cars that were...
No, I was just driving, I was carefully driving, I was trying to observe it. I'm a visual person, not that I don't believe people, but, you know, you see, it's, it really is, I hate to say it, it's like impressive that there's that much water that's coming through there.
Yes, it is impressive. What people don't realize, the vehicles who don't travel that, especially if you're, if you get detoured from Thomas, people don't realize, it dips a little bit. So they're, they're thinking, oh, okay, you know, I think my car will be fine, and then it dips, and they're like, oh, no.
Yeah, no, and I think one of the things that Supervisor McCusker was talking about, I mean, we are starting some projects, we have an active project in that, you know, the general neighborhood of there. So that's always been a neighborhood that, as was said, it's never, we are Westaway and down that way, that, you know, there was always a big price tag on doing a major project there. And I think what we have really, and with Ms. Heinrich kind of leading it, is that we've looked at it and trying to phase our way through this, as opposed to saying, well, we can't afford $40 million, or whatever the crazy number is, is, is the board has said, we got to do something. You know, they've, they're investing money, tax dollars into this, and they want to see that when we come to the budget and meet with everybody, we have some kind of plan of how we're going to continue to address stormwater. And, you know, it's, it's a challenge because, you know, it's, it's real there, it's real with other people that they're dealing with it too, and trying to make sure that we prioritize so that the next one isn't up into your house. You know, that's what we really want to try and prevent.
Like, literally this time, I literally did put two berms, and the one that's two feet from my front door, it was just cresting this time. Like, you could just, it was just ready to go down, and I'm like, and it just subsided, the water subsided. And if it does subside for like 10, 15 minutes, it gives it a chance to slide down. And then that's when it starts up again, and it's like in seconds, it's right back to normal. So, yeah, it's pretty scary.
Well, thank you again for taking time to come. And please, as Krista said, fill out that survey so that we can get, you know, people that didn't come tonight, that's totally fine, it's more important that they do the survey, right?
Yeah.
And we don't want you to feel alone. Like, I remember a lot of times feeling like nobody's listening to me. The thing is, you know, we're, we have to get the money together and put the plan together, but don't feel alone. Feel free to reach out to any of us personally and whatever, we'll keep you updated on where we're at. Come up to the meetings too, you know, keep us on task. Say, this is what happened, we appreciate that, so.
No, I appreciate you understanding.
Yeah, no, appreciate it.
So was it two weeks at a time for you guys to come out again?
Sure, yeah.
Maybe just we got calling or something.
You could probably do that right after the meeting, we're almost done here.
We're almost done.
Krista, why don't you head down there?
And as Krista said, get as many of your friends and neighbors to fill out that form too.
Yeah, I'm sure they were all, you know.
Yeah, Paul was nice enough to put the email together, so you saw that, this just gives